Yes, that's the best. I've got to take my by the nasty of the I'm like, I think so as well, and that's not put on this one thing.
And I think
Meaning. Oh, you're arguing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Richard, can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I can't hear you. Oh, I can hear you now.
Nick, can you see us?
Yes, I can see you and hear you now. That's all right.
That wasn't Nick though.
I reckon it's Nick. I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Oh.
Oh, well. One out of two, it bad.
Live.
Can I ask Mr Chair that council's online?
It was it was Nick causing the issue.
I don't know personally.
Okay, so David France has apologised. Does anybody else?
Yes, now.
Still.
And so we're just missing Julie and Sally.
Right, okay then. Has anybody got a declaration of interest or dispensation in part three of the LGA? Okay. Got no members of the public in the chamber. I forgot any online. I didn't notice this. Okay, so if there are no public questions, moving on to the minutes report for last month. November is always a busy time for the town council, possibly the biggest busiest month in our calendar. It started, of course, with a fireworks evening on the first of November, which was a great success, as it was the year before. It's an excellent event and it's one that's particularly enjoyed, I see, by people in the town and certainly worth keeping on with it and trying to keep it a free event. That was followed by the service in the memorial gardens on the seventh, which again was well attended. And then the Remembrance Sunday Parade itself and the Joe Service. And then on the eleventh, the two-minute silence outside the town hall. Yesterday was White Ribbon Day. And of course, this coming Saturday, we have the Windsor Festival. If the weather holds, it promises to be one of the one of the best ever. I think we've got more stalls booked than we've had for a very long time. Yeah.
Chairman, can I just say, I think it would be appropriate for us to thank all our staff because the work they've done in the last month. It's always a busy month anyway.
Yes.
But really, they they were so known and we all, we are deep gratitude to our staff for.
They haven't been, Phil, and you've taken the the next words right out of my mouth, which I was going to say. Thank you to all of you councillors and to our staff. Everybody altogether. I don't think there's anybody in the chamber that didn't contribute to some or all of the success of those events. So you can all take a lot of credit for that. Thank you all very much. And yeah, and particularly to us. At the last minute, the last meeting of full council, we conducted a lot of a lot of business. It was important work for town and for the management and administration of of the council. And if you just glance down the list of resolutions that were passed, there were things like free parking, the charity distribution of funds from the successful book sale, repairs to and new equipment for some of our clay areas. And I'm pushing forward important work on on the grants that we're trying to get. What distressed me about this month really was the reporting of all that. It 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 focused mainly on the sponsored agreements in the council chamber. And it deflected from all that good work we'd done. I think I remember reading things like meltdown, the the worst or the most disruptive meeting in living memory. Really, I I don't know. Was it was I at a different meeting? Yeah, we had some spats. But that is part of the rough and tumble, I think, of the democratic process. The work we actually did was was rather overlooked because of it. I'm not blaming the the ladies and gentlemen of the press. They will report what they think people want to read and sensational things are more avidly gobbled up than the normal tease. So so I'm not saying we're pressing the well, it's a savagery lesson to us, I think, that if we want to not to have that sort of negative harmful publicity, we just need to moderate our behaviour a little bit in the chamber because the work we're doing is worthwhile. It's valuable and everybody is contributing to it. So anyway, I'm sure tonight's meeting is going to be a mode of propriety. Maybe. Anyway, sorry, Bill, yeah.
Could I just add to what you said? A thank you to those who met together to plan the parade and the remembrance service. There have been so many positive comments about it. I think it's supposed to be recorded.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay. County Council and County Council Abdols, we've got Graham online and Carol, I think, as well. And Richard's here in the chamber. So is any county councillor dot an update that they would like to?
Hello, not at the moment.
Okay, can Richard? No. Graham? Oh, sorry. Sorry, I beg your pardon. I just thought of one thing. There have been some complaints about littering.
It's associated with the I don't know what that sounds. Oh.
Manchester method.
Magic. With the rioch, it was fast food outlets at the button and roundabout. Litter associated with those fast food outlets on the canal tow path.
Yeah.
And it's an issue I've taken up and I know Carol is aware of this as well with the the councils refuse people and they are liaising with the operators of the new facilities out there to ensure that there are adequate litter bins and collections of some of the ways that is collected, particularly along the canal tow path.
Right. Can they be made responsible for that? I suppose. No more than any other person can be, I guess.
There are there are requirements for them to provide adequate littering facilities, certainly. And what I hear, they are cooperative. We're trying to help with with the disposal of litter. But I think it's probably inevitable result of of having outlets like that in that location.
Fortunately, yeah.
Just as a further one, I've also heard a lot of reports of people who used to go to that area to do dog walking. And they've headed to the same area to park up and walk their dogs down the canal and have been informed that the parking is now only available for people who are frequenting fast food restaurants. So I wondered whether there was any information on whether parking would be made publicly available when they made the planning permission and stuff. Because obviously, if they agreed to make it parking available for the public and aren't, then there's more of an issue.
Yeah, interesting. I mean, it's not an agenda item. I don't think I can really debate that at this point, but we can just probably put it on the agenda.
Just to say that we were dealing with correspondence as well. We've looked at the plans there are, but the planning committee will discuss it in January as an enforcement mission.
Chairman, can I just pick up on what Richard said regarding the areas on the button and cross there? Because four months after the first thing opened, and that was the McDonald's side of it, we identified, well, I particularly identified a complaint that I've received. And that was that from the railway station to the Arrowhead turning, we had lights at night with no pavement. And from the Arrowhead turning to McDonald's, we had pavement with no lights. And it's still the same now. People are still complaining when they go down there at night. If you walk down half the length, if they're walking the whole length, if they're walking down half the length, they've got lights and they're walking on grass and the cars come and try and park them. On the other half of it, they've got a pavement with no lights. And it's ridiculous. And I'm sorry, our county council were told about it by this council within six months of its first opening and nothing, but nothing has been done.
Yeah, again, yeah, you're right. It has been raised before. I would just ask our county councillors to take note and perhaps to take that forward with with powers and maybe report back at some point on what, if anything, has been decided about.
One thing to remember, Chairman, is when when big organisations like this apply for private permission, they can be told they have to provide those lights down our street. Or they can be told they have to provide that footpath on that side of the street or whatever.
They can indeed.
Actually, nothing was done, was it?
No, I'm sure there were some sort of reciprocal arrangements that were made, but it didn't include that. You're right. Anyway.
Sorry, without being aware of the specific planning conditions, I would remind people that the bypass is a trump road and therefore responsibility to Trump Road Agency.
Yeah.
And I do hope that people are not walking on the verge between the railway station and the Arrowhead turn. Because that really could not be a sensible thing to be doing.
I'm sorry, I what I've said is absolutely true, Chairman. And if anybody wants to question it, they better go down there and have a look what's going on. But it's been the same since it opened. One of these days, there's going to be an accident down there at night. And then somebody's going to pay for it.
Yeah, okay, that's ample sense, Phil. I'm six minutes of matters arising from the last full council minutes. I think, you know, if you've read those, we just need a proposal and a second to accept the minutes as correct and accurate.
Can I just raise an issue with a minute?
Yeah, sure.
Councillor for one proposed and seconded motion, Richard, it's got.
Which motion?
It will be under the draft, but no. Town Hall transformation. I got the one page. I turned the page somewhere. It says a councillor's quarrel proposed.
Proposed and seconded with you, didn't it? So I don't think you knew which one was the proposed and which one was the second.
But it's important that we.
Yeah, absolutely. We will amend it. Thank you.
There we go. It shows the second amendment was proposed, the councillor's quarrel and seconded by Jack.
Okay, other than that. We'll accept and accept the minutes.
Yes.
Okay.
I need to propose a second at first.
Yeah, so.
Propose.
Thank you. And secondly, fine. Okay, consider that amended. So Alison.
Yeah.
Are you for or against?
Uh, by them.
Uh, Bill, abstain. Uh, Richard?
For.
And Phil?
Against.
Michael. Uh, Jackson?
Uh, for.
And for. Uh, Phil?
For.
Um, Nick?
Yeah, it's four.
I can't see if he's for or against.
I think that's a four.
Uh, Carol?
For.
Can you see me or hear me?
Yes.
He's on there twice.
Did you want to say something, Nick?
No, I just wanted to know if I was being heard.
Oh, yes, yes, we counted your vote. Were you voting for or against, Nick?
For.
Oh, thank you. And Chris?
Abstain.
So that's, yeah, force.
Okay, thank you. That's that's passed. Okay, eight chairs, matters arising from minutes.
Matters arising. Yeah, the one, so the book sale monies are still waiting to be paid. The allocations are slightly out because we've had more money than has been allocated. So we need to work out whether I think it's four grand actually. We need to work out where the hand goes, but we'll discuss that in the new year. And parking was agreed and signed and paid for. And all the other items have been approved or in progress. Working group in relation to the Motte Bailey met earlier this week. And that was a positive. And fees and charges, we did a press release today about fees and charges. They go into effect on the 3rd of January. And the staffing elements of the meeting, we have had a consultation, as discussed in the last finance and governance session. And the structure is being implemented from the 1st of January.
Right, thank you, Richard. Has anybody got any other matter arising from the minutes? Not we all. Move on to item seven. The the committees, starting with events and planning, which we're required to note this only, of course. So I don't know, Chris, you all too take us through that.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, military events and planning committee held on 15th of the 11th in the council chamber. Page one. Two. Three. Four. Five. You'll see a lot of resolutions there and on the last page and that's about it.
Thanks, Chris. Is there a proposer?
To.
So, yeah, so we're just noting.
It's an opportunity for people to ask questions. Who knows what's there, but.
Yeah, okay.
And you can see in relation to some of those resolutions, so the committee that winter festival and approved the purchase of the two trees. Of course, you'd probably see the tree outside went up on Monday.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Item eight, one, Finance and Governments Committee, November. Morag, Jordan.
Do you need me to go through them page by page?
No, I think just just the recommendations.
I'll go straight to the recommendations. So it was recommended that we recommend to council that they pay the invoices for November. And the complaints policy, they were provided with a draft, which is purely the One Voice Wales model policy. And I felt in agreement with the committee that we could do better than the basic that's in the complaints policy. And we deferred it to the next meeting of the events and planning. And I've already said to plug some of my thoughts, although I've had some since as well, so there's plenty of time on that. The next one was the Freedom of Information Publication Scheme, which was approved and to adopt. So we recommend to approve to adopt the Freedom of Information Publication Scheme. The festive closure period for staff. And so the office is going to be closed from the 19th, I believe.
Yeah.
Till the sixth.
Fifth.
Fifth of January. However, the committee approved two additional days of paid leave for staff. And you'll remember they get the statutory holidays. They also get two contractual holiday periods. But it was agreed that we would recommend that they receive an additional two days of paid leave. And so that the offices would close, and technically no work goes on for the whole of that period. That was the recommendation that was made.
Thank you, Morag. Yeah, so we need we need to adopt those recommendations, but I know that one of them was on quite a split vote. So if there's dissent, we'll probably take the one on one.
Could I speak on that? Item, please, on six point three.
Yes.
I I think that I am very concerned about this because we have the Thursday is Christmas Day. That, of course, is a bank holiday. The Friday is a bank holiday, Boxing Day. Saturday and Sunday are off. Then the following week, on the Monday and Tuesday, councillors, unlike most employed people, are given these two days off. As Morag explained, they are contractual public sector days, so they have those two days off, extra to most people. Then the Wednesday is being proposed that we give them another day's holiday. That is New Year's Eve. They will then have New Year's Day off as a bank holiday, which is the Thursday. And the proposal is to give them the Friday off, which is another day that we would be giving them. I am very concerned that we are demonstrating, we're showing excessive largesse with money that is not ours. This belongs to the people of Welshpool, who are not getting all these days off. And we are choosing to do that. The people that have to work, those our staff who have to work those days will obviously then take time off in lieu beyond that. Now, we have the equivalent, we have 10 full-time equivalent employees. I am very concerned that we should be deciding to give the equivalent of 20 days' time out of our out of our funds so that our staff have extra holiday again. I should add that as of next year, they will also be getting another two days of statutory holidays with their annual leave. I just think it's too much in comparison with what our residents, the people here, have. It is not in any way a reflection on the work they do and their commitment. It's entirely our responsibility in terms of our finance, which we need to look after as carefully as we can for everybody.
Thank you, Alison. Bill?
I was just wondering whether we should, whether we are supposed to accept the minutes before we start discussing the recommendations.
You don't accept the minutes. The committee approves the minutes.
So do we do we do we need a proposal that we take each recommendation separately then, since that seems.
I already decided that I was going to take one separately. I don't think that.
The default is you take them separately.
Yeah. Richard?
Thank you. I would like to second the proposal that we don't accept this recommendation, if that's the right way to do it. I think, I think, I think the point.
You won't be able to do that. So that's that's negating. You, you won't be able to do that, so that's, that's, that's negating the motion.
Okay.
You'll, you'll, you'll just have to vote against it.
Let me speak against the recommendation then, okay, uh, I think um, the point, one point that was made when we discussed this at finance committee is that uh, county council staff get this allowance. That's not true. Uh, we have county council staff going out and picking up our refuse and our recycling. We have care workers going in to visit our elderly and infirm people. We have highways staff out managing our roads, gritting our roads, dealing with any issues that arise. And, um, if we, if we give people extra days off, there is still work to be done. And they will either have to pick up that work later alongside their other work, or it won't be done at all. And I think if we accept that we pay our staff, uh, to do a job, it isn't actually fair then to say that they've got to do that job, uh, in fewer hours. And in particular, it's not fair, and I think as, as Alison said, on very many people who don't work in public services, we don't get that this sort of allowance, and I think it doesn't send the right message out to our taxpayers, um, and I would support the rejection of this recommendation.
Okay, I mean, it is quite true that it's unusual for, uh, public bodies of employers in the public sector to do this, but I, I mean, it's very common in the private sector. I mean, I hear what you say about, you know, it's, it, it just happens the way the days fall, there's just this few days in the middle, so, uh, yeah.
Thank you, Chair, um, I voted against this, um, when it was presented to us. Um, and the town clerk at the time recommended that they be allowed to use two days' holiday to cover that period, so they didn't go, have to go into work. Um, it's not just in comparison with other people, because even within our own staff, we don't, it's not everybody will be able to take those two weeks off. Um, so the operations team won't be able to take the whole two weeks off, because there will still be work to do. The meals on wheels staff will not be able to take, um, that whole time off. Um, so it, it creates a, a difference between our own staff, let alone anybody else. And, and I don't think there's a suggestion that, oh, well, if they have to come in, they, they use that extra day, we were giving them an, another day. Um, so it was more problems than, than I thought it was worth. And while I do value the staff very much, you know, it is quite generous holiday entitlement and statutory and additional, um, uh, days that they do get. Um, but I think this was taken, it's too far, and I did not think that the, the people of Welshpool would warm to us giving away their money, because it's, you know, it's paid through the council precept to, additionally to staff when we didn't need to. Um, and they would, you know, they wouldn't get any, anything like that, so I, I did vote against it.
Okay, uh, thanks, thanks, Maureen. Um, I've got Chris, uh, Chris, how did it all come to you? Uh, Chris?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, uh, thank you, Miss Mer, um. I, I just, uh, I just wanted to say I will be standing out of this debate, um, through, uh, a conflict of interest.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thanks, Chris.
Chairman, I am absolutely dog-sacked by what's going on here. There is a word in the dictionary called respect. And you either respect the people we employ for the job they do, or you don't, you're no good agreeing something five minutes ago and then doing the opposite now, right? We get a hell of a lot of support and help from our staff, and as such, we should show some respect. It's unfortunate, if you like, that this year, Christmas, so I miss a fall on, on a Thursday. It doesn't happen every other year, and when it's Monday or Tuesday, it just falls in line. But here we have a situation where, what, the, it's, it's a situation where we're asking, we're gonna be asking people to come in for one day on the Wednesday or something, right? It's, it's not all, and, and as far as I'm concerned, right, I have the greatest of respect for the staff that work for us and the job they do for us. Very often, outside of normal working hours. And you know it and I know it, without our staff doing the job they do, this council would collapse overnight. Make no mistake about it, and people better recognise that fact, right? But at the end of the day, Chairman, I'll ask for a recorded vote on this one as well, so that the people of Welshpool and the people who we employ can see who votes for them and who doesn't.
Thanks, Phil. Um, Ben? I've got no Ben, I'll go on.
Thank you, Chair, yeah, just a quick question from me, I think I know the answer, but I just wanna check. Um, can this recommendation take an amendment, or is it just a yes, no vote?
Um, I think you can take an amendment if it hasn't, if it doesn't negate it, so you can't put the word no. I think if, if, yes, if the vote, if, if it's voted down, then I think we can propose. You need to, you need to amend it before, yeah. You need to add it before you vote on.
These three amendments and the second, uh, that then is taken first, and that falls down then the original vote.
Okay. But you're not negating it.
Did you want to speak before I make an amendment?
Yeah, just, just, just.
Chairman, I'm sorry, under rules of the Welsh Government, the, the situation is such that you cannot have a, a recommendation ag- against this motion. You can have a different recommendation with something different, you can give them all five thousand pound a year increase or whatever, that's a different amendment.
That's what we just.
You can't put a minimum, you can't put an amendment to this, the motion is as it is, and council's gotta decide, yes or no? If it fails, if it fails, they can put another motion up tomorrow.
Standing order one C says you can amend the motion, but I, that's what I just said, you, you can't negate the motion, I, I, I literally just said that. I, I just wanted to, to comment, because I've been town clerk, I'm responsible for staffing, um. I don't want there to be any, any reflection reported that giving staff extra, extra holiday gives them extra pay, it doesn't, just enables us to take a holiday somewhere else in the year. Um, you know, we're not talking about a cash injection to staff, are we? So when we talk about money, we're talking about in, in balance sheet too, as opposed to physical, physical cash. Um, this, I think, happens every year, as in, when the office is closed, staff will have to take leave. I had to do it when I worked in, in Paris for, for twelve years, it just does what happens, and it's happened for the last couple of years. Um, very kindly, the committee decided to, um, I think this is right, but recognised the contribution that staff had made this year and decided to recommend that two additional days was given, which is lovely. Um, and I think, I speak on behalf of the staff, they say was, was very supportive and, and thank you for proposing that. Um, in terms of logistical though, it, it, look, it, people who are, people will be working that week. The office will be closed and the TIC will be closed, so I might not be working, but my operations team will be. Um, there's quite a big event happening in the town hall on the third. So they will, they're definitely working on the second, um, as Richard just said, in Paris, highway staff are working, you know, my, my team will be going out, doing the bid run, checking the buildings, you know, we don't kind of stop for Christmas. Some, some elements the council do and some elements don't. Meals and Will staff again will be delivering throughout this period, so, um, if you were to award the extra days, um, those extra days have to be taken by different people at different times, because they are still required to be in work to do the job we need them to do, they just have to mean that we'd have to take it at a, a different time. Um, I just wanted to give you that. Thank you, Richard. Nick?
Hello?
Yes, Nick?
Yes.
Uh, can, can everybody, I'm having trouble with.
It's the first one of them.
Uh, can you hear me, Nick? You've got, you've got feedback going on, have you got two devices switched on? I think he's got rid of one.
They got rid of the ones that was talking about, unfortunately.
Um, anyway, while we wait for Nick, um. Yeah, I mean, our, our staff, uh, have had a particularly hard, hard year, um. They've worked really hard and they've, they've worked, uh, probably above and beyond, and they've, they've worked a lot of them outside of their required hours, um, the fact that this is a bit of an anomaly, because we've just got these two days that falls smack, smack bang in the middle of the statutory period and the New Year. Bank holiday, uh, my initial view was, give it to them, but I mean, I hear what Richard says, that some people are gonna have to come in on those days, and so rather than um, they be disadvantaged by that, they would have to be given that time to take some other, other time, which then it starts to get rather messy, I mean, I'm still minded to give them two days personally. Um, because I think they, I think they deserve it, but, you know, obviously.
So, so, two and a half days, because we already give them half day on Christmas Eve?
No, we don't.
They don't?
No. Anyway.
So they go earlier on Christmas?
Uh, it's just, it's like.
Christmas Eve.
It's just, um, uh, that's just a, we, we don't formally give them Christmas Eve, but the TIC does close early on Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
Uh, but we don't, of course, that doesn't happen to all staff, for example. Me in the office, I don't get Christmas Eve off, I booked it off as annual leave, so, you know, I won't be there anyway, but, um. But we, we don't formally give off Christmas Eve, uh, the county council used to. And I, I think when I was an employee of the county council, they got rid of it, and then that, that's just the nature, how it's evolved over the last ten years or so. Thanks, Richard. Um, Nick, I don't know if you can, you can still hear me, but, uh, we can't see you now, but if you've got a, a question or you, you've got a, something you want to say, uh, by all means, uh, try again, but I'm, I'm going to Bill in the meantime.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, um, much as I have listened carefully, uh, to, uh, voices from my immediate right and left and agree with some of what they've said, um, my feeling is that, uh, to require people, uh, uh, to take two days of their annual leave, uh, their, their normal annual leave, simply because the office is closed for those days, um, feels wrong to me, and so I will continue to, uh, support the recommendation.
Thanks, Ben?
I'd like to suggest an amendment, um, I don't know how it will go, but I'd like to suggest an amendment that we change or edit the motion and recommendation to approve one day. Sorry, one additional day of paid leave for staff on the thirty first. Because like Richard said, a lot of staff will come back in on the second, a lot of people go to work on the second, across all sectors. One day on the thirty first gives them plenty of time to celebrate New Year's Eve and New Years, and then go back to work. It's a compromise, and I think hopefully it can be supported by many.
There is a seconded for that.
Chairman, that negates the motion, that's saying that's a different proposition. Not an amendment, but a different proposition.
No, it's not, it's an amendment, it's a. Doesn't negate the motion, it's an amendment to mention. Um.
Yeah, it negates, it negates the, the motion in terms of two days, and it puts it a such, such a good one day. That is a different motion.
That's, I'm not sure, no. I'm not sure it does negate it, I mean, the, the, the proposal was to give, give them additional days, the amendment is that instead of two, we give them one. I'm not sure that that negates the actual motion, does it, Richard? I'm honestly not sure, it, it would be, it would be cleaner to not do it as an amendment, but to do it as a separate vote, as in, as in, if you reject it's two days, then you could just, then you could consider one day.
Okay.
But you, also you could do it the amendment, but I'm just, I'm just thinking back to the last meeting when we were talking about amendments and it got very messy. Yeah, um. So, I mean, if you took. But, Chair, it's your ruling. Took a vote on the, from the proposal that's originally framed. Mm-hmm. Um, if that doesn't pass, then presumably you can, you can make it an alternative. Of course, good. Recommendation, so it seems to me that you've got to take the vote on the two days. It would be cleaner, I think, to, to do that. Okay. But it's, it's up to you, Chair. Yeah, okay, well, I think that's what I'm gonna do. So, uh, we'll, we'll take a vote on the proposal as it was originally drafted. Um, I was just going to say that Nick is still muted and stuff, um. Is there any way we can find out if we can get hold of him, just so he can say his thing personally? Well, if he can still hear us, I, I've said that if he wants to. I have a horrible feeling he might not be able to hear us on that device. I, I wouldn't be surprised, um.
The, 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 the device that was closed was the one he was actually speaking in, and so it may be that he's not even aware of the other one being.
If I remove him as well?
Yeah.
Do you think that would cause him to come back again? I mean, it means when he does come back, it should be, he doesn't echo, hopefully, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, no, anyway.
Anyway, so we have, uh, a recommendation to approve two additional days of paid leave for staff on the thirty first of December twenty twenty five and the second of January twenty twenty six. So I'm just gonna take the vote, uh, the, the, so those in favour, please.
I did ask for a recorded vote, please, Chairman.
Okay. It does need a vote in second, doesn't it? Yeah. Okay. I see Phil is proposing. I'm proposing, since there is seconded for that.
For what?
For the, for the motion that was originally recommended.
Oh, I, I, I've asked for a recorded vote.
Yeah. Yes, but I need a seconded for.
No, you don't, standing orders says one member can ask for a recorded vote.
No, 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 not. You can't vote, just, I need, I need, I need a proposal and a seconded that we now vote on the, uh, recommendation that was made as it was drafted. So presumably you second that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I'll propose it, Phil seconded it. Okay. So, and Phil wants a recorded vote. That's fine. Alison?
Against.
Uh, Bill?
Four.
Uh, Richard?
Against.
Uh, Morag?
Can I just say, I respect the staff, but I respect the people of Welshpool more, and I vote against it.
Jackson?
I'm for.
Uh, Ben?
Against.
Uh, Phil, I win.
Cool.
Oh, I've got you as well, Phil. I see you're for. Um, Carol?
I am against it.
Uh, Chris?
Abstaining with a conflict of interest.
Yeah, yeah, and you're declaring the interest, um, and Nick is not here to vote, um, however, that is, uh, one, two, three, four, 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 one, two, three, four, five against. Okay, so that's fair, and now we can have an amended.
No, we can't, we have another, uh, a.
Yeah, we even have a, yes, a second, a second. Yes, so does anybody want to?
Ben? Can I propose we give the staff one day extra leave?
Okay. So that's your proposal, if there is seconded.
I'm more than seconded, okay?
Sure, with respect, there is no respect in this chamber. It's a disgrace what's going on here, and the people here know it, it's a disgrace, I'm leaving, Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Phil.
Well, I hope the press have heard all this, and it will make the headline. But it's disgraceful the way you treat your staff, you, you wouldn't keep staff in any company with this sort of attitude. Good night.
Good night. Um, okay.
I'd like to say something if I can, please.
Don't count.
My opinion is, we are dealing with the people's money. Nobody else gets two extra days or anything else, we all have to go to work. If they want extra days, they should use statutory. I'm sorry, but as I've said, this is people's money, they're having the holidays as everybody else does, and people even work in the holidays, I do not think this is right at all. I'm not happy about this.
Thank you, Carol. So, anyway. Can I just say that this did not come from staff, this wasn't a proposal made by staff, I didn't have an opinion on this, I just wanna make sure that everyone understands that, you think everyone wants, we're not involved in this at all.
Uh, excuse me, I've got something to print. Uh, can I just say, I, I, as I understand it, financially, this is actually cost neutral as far as the precepts are concerned?
Yeah, but as I said before, there's no cash change. It, it's, 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 it's not even balance sheet, it's, it's the fact that someone has to take a day off somewhere else, which means the work doesn't get done somewhere else, that's, that's all it is, it's. Yeah. Okay, well, we've got a proposal and a seconded for Ben's, um. Oh, it's Jackson's second. Yeah, yes, Jackson has seconded it, so, uh, I think we need.
I just think Carol needs the proposal explained again, I think she might, may have thought the the previous proposal was accepted from what she just said.
Uh, did you hear that, Carol?
Oh, right, sorry, sorry. I've heard that, sorry, thank you for that, Alison, thank you. But I'm still against it anyway.
Yeah, that particular recommendation failed, and now we're, we're about to vote on a different proposal, and that's that we give them one day on the thirty first. And that's been posed by Ben, seconded by Jackson, so, uh, those in favour of that, please. One, two, three, four, five. Carol?
Four.
Six. One, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, six and seven. Yeah, okay, so, yeah, so that, that carries. Thank you all very much.
Apologies about that.
That's nice, that's nice, please, sorry.
I think we need to have those against and have sentience, but I think so, we've.
Oh, yeah, we do, okay, so, uh, any against? Oh, yeah, we do, okay, so, uh, any against? Any two against and abstentions?
Then, no, start. Uh, Chris, I'm person.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Um, now the other recommendations made by the, um, Finance and Governance Committee, I think we can, can we take those on mass? Let's just vote, vote to approve the recommendation, just one. Yeah, okay, so, uh.
What are the proposed recommendations?
Okay, second, Allison. Okay, so those in favour of acceptance of those?
Hands up.
I think that's unanimous. Thank you. Right, and I'm moving on to finance nine, one. Uh, the council, council accounts for October, three, seven. I think that's appendix E. And it, I think. Yeah, appendix E N F. Um. So we're just, we're just noting the balances, aren't we? Yes, it doesn't require a vote, presumably.
No, it's your opportunity to, they've already been discussed by the finance committee. It's your opportunity to ask them questions if you weren't in the committee, or just you need to be able to have these. Or.
Okay, should I, should I just mention, as discussed at Finance Committee, what's in front of you, um, shows a, a better position than we were in this time last year. Um, and the fact that we're on track to end the year in a better position than we were, um, last year as well, so.
Yeah.
Feeling any other emergencies that are happening?
Yes. Yes, thanks, thanks for pointing that out, Moore. Again, finance and governance is in a better shape now than it has been a while ago. And that, uh, that's obviously a very good thing. And do you in no small part tomorrow, excellent staff?
We try that, yeah.
Okay, you need to do anything with this. Anybody got anything they want to say about those? Okay, so we can move on. Nine two is the payment of invoices for November. Um. G and H.
Quickly, Richard, if the proposal from Finance Committee was to recommend the payments and that's gone through, do we need another vote?
Yeah, because finance can't approve them on its own. It just recommends.
Yeah.
Um, and it never really gets, it never gets tied up in the recommendation anyway, because it's already, because it always is a separate item.
But the chamber is just.
The chamber, chamber, in effect, yeah, in, in effect, you're rubber stamping what the financials have already done.
So for the benefit of those that weren't in Finance Committee meeting, is there any item in the invoices that they want to raise? Uh, or to query?
Um, Chair, I'll just say there's a, there's a few more invoices that, um, were, we received back in September. I did receive them. Um, so I will pay those tomorrow under my delegate power and the tax regulations, because they're now late.
Okay, yes.
They are, they're in the system now, so you'll see them next month.
Okay.
So, Chair, can I just make a comment? And just thank Richard, because, um, um, one of my issues with invoices when I first got here was how long it was taking us to pay them. Um, and the system is now working much better, much more regular and quickly. So thank you very much, Richard.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And it wasn't reflecting very well on us, because I think some people get quite a low prime record.
Um, for the, um, for the annual report, um, we will put in what our average time to pay is. Um, I, I'd hope to improve on that next year. Um, but you're right, some of our invoices are, yeah, I think, over due.
Okay, can we have a vote, sorry, Bill?
Um, can I just, um, also say that, um, you know, the presentation of, um, both accounts and, um, invoices for payment and so forth is so much better than it has been, so much easier for, for councillors to make sense of.
It's immeasurably better, and apparently it's still done on the same system, so it's just, yeah, yeah. Okay, so we need a proposer for, um, the payment of the invoices. Thank you. So, uh, those in favour?
Hands up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Nick hasn't rejoined us yet.
No, he hasn't, no.
I have, I have messaged him on Facebook, but it's, nothing back yet.
Okay, item ten is the, uh, draft two of the, uh, the budget for twenty twenty six, twenty seven. Um, appendices I and J. Um. It's pretty much done, isn't it, apart from, um.
Wow.
Events.
Wow, I thought the budget was done, and then we had lots of exciting changes today in the budget. Not our budget, but the, you can, no, then. The, um, the only change I saw today actually was, uh, our, um, non-miscuit rates have been revalued for two thousand and twenty six. Um, so there'll be, need to be a few amendments to our business rate lines for, uh, you'll be, you'll be pleased that our biggest cost, of course, town hall, um, was unchanged. So fantastic. Um, some of our other buildings were, were changed, so, um, I think, um, I think checks and challenges on those would be appropriate. Um, we currently pay business rates on, um, I don't know if you know, but, um, the, the clubhouse or the pavilion at Myser Dray is rated. Um, the, the stand itself. Um, and we don't actually pay anything because it's small, it falls under small business rate relief. However, our rate of value is doubling from April twenty twenty six, so I think that's definitely worth a, uh, a check and a challenge to, 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 to.
Could I ask? You mean the stand, the?
The, the, yeah, where it says Tegwin Evans.
Yes.
Yes, that's rated.
Well. It's, that's, it's not, is it, in what way is it construed as a, as a full building? It doesn't store anything. It's, it's a shelter with seats in it.
It is still a hereditate.
Okay, right.
I, I like to use the word hereditary. I'm used it for a while now. I think I have my dog, a British dog. Moore has the word hereditary, but I use it all the time. Well, they are. No, and, and look, look, I'm in finance at nineteen eighty eight, um, version sixty five, so, yeah. That will already is rated.
Yes, it can be useful for Scrabble.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I can't. I can't think why that word hasn't come up in any of my crosswords yet. It never has.
It, 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 it's, unless, unless more of us find anything else, but, um, just to say, so the, from draft one to draft two, so, um, we discussed draft one back in October, and you instructed committees to make savings. Um, uh, I'm not sure they did much saving, but, um, uh, staff pay, I, I've dropped down from five percent uplift to four percent, just because national protections are emerging. Uh, we've reallocated some of the lines, uh, to better reflect the new community services manager salary. Uh, market testing is now being done on most of the utility electric costs. That hygiene contract was currently, um, nine thousand pounds in both the tunnel and the toilets, so I split that out, which is correct, so nine thousand saving. Uh, town hall repairs, uh, slightly down, just for the transformation work that we're doing. Uh, cleaning materials dropped considerably because we're no longer employing agency cleaners. Uh, all the vehicle account codes now accurately reflect the current lease arrangements that the council are contractually, uh, like, like, should pay. Um, and income has actually, um, been revised on a projected basis, um, of what we've got to this year. Uh, off the top of my head, actually, I think we are in next year's budget, um, uh, projecting to collect, um, eight thousand pounds more than we're this year. Um, which of course helps, because of course income, ex, external minus income is the precept. Um, so, so a, any increase in income helps me to get that cost. Um, some work has been done on, uh, moving I T costs to a dedicated, uh, cost centre, because they're getting lost in the I T code. Uh, we're up the bank interest, um, and, um, in terms of events, um, the T I C budget's been, um, reallocated, um, looking at the current agency split. Uh, which, um, I think Alison went back early, was sixteen percent, I can work that out.
Sixteen point seven.
Sixteen point seven. Um, and a new line was added for the place plan, and there was a few other things I think was added as well. I think the committee asked for gifts for Santa to be included in the events bit. Um, I've also now today as well, um, gone through and added in the, um, the staffing overtime cost for each event, and based on exactly what hours will be done on each event, so that's now in the budget and quantified. Um, uh, so that's draft two. Um, the next step now is that the committees will discuss draft three in January, and then you will set a budget and precept for the next financial year in the, on the twenty eighth of January. Um, council can also discuss this in December if it wants to, but, um, I'm hoping December will be a, a quicker meeting. Um, but in, in terms of, um, discussing, discussing the budget, you'll note from the events, uh, notes, uh, events, minutes that, um, the Chair and Vice Chair asked to meet with me, uh, and with, um, the Chair of the Finance Committee, um, and some of the staff to go through, um, some of the specific elements of their budget. So that will happen in December and we'll report back in January. Um, I have spoken to the Chair this week, um, about arranging a meeting kind of.
If, okay.
And, but the Chair did have his hand up, but he's, he's put it down again now, so hopefully I've answered this question.
Right, okay, Alison?
Um, about, um, Richard, item four, the hygiene contract.
Yes.
Could you, I, I think I may have misunderstood you earlier today.
Okay.
When are we able to, when are you looking to close that contract?
So the contract as it ends is, um, from January, it becomes rolling. So it gives us, so we're currently in a three-year contract with them. And from, I need to give them notice on the first of January, so I have, I have a draft ready and my email's ready to send on the first of January to get notice that we want to review our contract, because otherwise it just turns into a rolling one year. Um, however, so I'm anticipating the costs will go down. Um, but we still need to budget at the amount it is now, because it, you know, it might not, might not change. Um, uh, the, the reason I'm thinking it's going to go down is the fact that the current contract is construed on the basis that we are also still paying for the hand dryers that were in the T I C toilets, um, which aren't there anymore. But of course, it was, it happened during the, the transformation of words of that, that toilet, so we could get out of the contract. But this will be, this will be the first opportunity to, um, to remove those elements. So I'm, I'm expecting to go down, but it is a substantial cost per year. Um, however, looking at alternatives, um, I found a paperwork that, um, the previous clerk had done in terms of testing this area. Um, it is quite an expensive job, um, because of the requirements about waste handling, you know, sanitary products, et cetera, so, um. I, I don't know how much we can save, but it is prudent to budget for what is currently, and then, of course, we can make savings in the year then if it's something.
Uh, on that point, I have a feeling after the, um, uh, the One Voice Wales Conference, there is a company, and I think I passed the details over, that deal with, um, uh, sanitary ware and things, um, that does powders and would, would give a very good deal um, to us as well. Um, I can't remember all the details off, off the top of my head.
I thought that was just cleaning products.
Is it just cleaning products?
I couldn't remember. But, um, we've actually got established suppliers for cleaning products, so.
Right, okay, right, thank you.
Nice. Okay, thank you for that report, Richard.
I, I, I have to say that the Finance and Governance Committee did go pretty much line by line through the budget, so I thank them for that work. And, um, you'll look at the opportunity as well over in January to do exactly the same thing. Uh, it, it's, it's massively important, as I said before, that you, you own this budget, all of you, even individually and collectively, um, because at the end of the day, that's your biggest power in effect, is the ability that you have the power to raise a precept, uh, which other groups do not. Uh, that is your, your silver bullet, so, um, you need to be mindful against financial sustainability for residents as well, so.
Thank you, Richard.
So, Chair. Um, can I just say it's also worth noting that Richard has gone through the budget line by line with the operations team and other staff as well, so um, the staff have been involved this year, wearing, as in previous years, they have enough.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's right. Okay, uh, we can move on to other matters now, item eleven, and the first of those is the marching band for the Remembrance Parade next year, uh, which comes in at a cost, if we, uh, if we have it, of one thousand two hundred pounds. Does anybody have a view that they would like to share? Alison?
Uh, well, coincidentally, today, Richard and I saved one thousand two hundred pounds. So, I think we should do it. I think the town would appreciate it. They, they were very disappointed when we were unable to have a band, and I think that people of Rossford want a band.
Yeah. It is one of the events each year where people turn out enthusiastically, and it's, uh, we, even when the weather isn't so good, uh, is pretty well attended, and I think a band will, will really make a big difference, and I know the veterans would like it as well. So I'm, I'm, yeah, uh.
So, Chair, can we just clarify, because I know in Finance and Committee and Governance, we're talking about, well, actually, there are two events we'd like a band there. And that, that price is just for one event.
It's just for the one, it's just for the one. I, the, 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 the suggestion was that we might also have it for the Mayor's Sunday Parade or uh, Town Sunday, whatever you want to call it. Um, but I think, uh, traditionally, we haven't had a band for that. And I think the, the general consensus was that it, we probably didn't need it for both events.
I know that it was said that traditionally we didn't, but my recollection is that we did.
Hmm.
And I do think that perhaps it might be worth asking this band. Obviously, there is greater demand for Remembrance Day, Remembrance Sunday, and we may well, if we were having them twice a year, be able to get them at a slightly lower cost for the other day.
I don't think finding a band for Mayor's Sunday will be difficult.
Neither do I.
Because it, it, the difficulty is because every other town is also using their own band.
For Remembrance.
And, and the Mayor's Sunday is a movable feast anyway, so.
There's already, there's already a budget for Mayor's Sunday, um, so that, uh, uh, you, you just explained, Chair, the reason this is on the agenda this evening is because, um, if we want to book them, we have to pay a deposit. I mean, if you book them like ASAP, and it didn't, you couldn't wait until January for the next event meeting, so, so Chris kindly agreed that we could have it this evening. Um, instead of.
Okay.
I, I, I would like first of all to say that I don't think we need one for Mayor's Sunday, but secondly, to, um, uh, to propose that we do accept this quote for, um, uh, for Remembrance.
Yeah, I think the vote tonight is just, just on that. I mean, I, I'm not saying that we, we wouldn't have a band for Mayor's Sunday, because Richard says we have a budget for Mayor's Sunday, and if we put it in, if it fits in the budget, why not? If we can get a band cheap enough. But this vote is purely on Remembrance.
But I'm, I'm happy to propose that.
Okay, is there a second to? Jackson, okay, those in favour?
Oh, go on, Nick.
I, I, I've already budgeted for it. Uh, it was just the, the act of booking it, um, for this tonight, so.
Hands up.
Thank you, Carol, Chris.
Your. Hands up, yes, sorry, Chair.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, which means, Chair, that we'll need to pay three hundred pounds in the current financial year. Um, we'll work out how we, how we manage that one, because the cost, of course, is in the next year, but we'll, we'll solve that.
We need to budget that.
Well, we'll do that.
Yeah, okay. Um, so I think that was carried unanimously.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Um, hello, item eleven two, the civic and ceremonial working group. Uh, now this is to consider creating a group to work with town clerk and officers on all aspects of civic and ceremonial issues. Now, these are all the, uh, those from civic events that we put on throughout the year.
Yeah, Chair, a lot of it was around like the history of, I believe that some time ago, when the, the mayor was elected, you all had to stand up and, you know, to go outside and be grobed and come back in again. So it's about, it's about, it's trying to understand what previous traditions went on, but what the council would like to do in the future, if it would like to do anything. That was the point of the group, to, to go away and consider how it wanted to do anything like that in the future, and then, and then come back with the recommendations, because I, I've got no steer from you of what is a good idea or a bad idea.
I don't really know. Uh, I, I suppose, um, it's a bit like, uh.
A lot of people think you do that. That was an example of something that you stand.
Since Covid, so many court hearings now have gone online, and without the majesty of the court, people start to behave quite, uh, appallingly. Um, whereas they don't when they feel that, you know, that they're in a very formal, uh, atmosphere. And I, I don't like council meetings to appear too stilted and, and formal. I would certainly not want to robe up for, for council meetings, maybe possibly the annual meeting, but not, I mean, even wearing the chain is probably a bit over the top, but I wouldn't mind doing it. Um, but I, I don't know. I don't know what people think. I, I, I think, I think a little bit more formality in our meetings wouldn't go amiss. Um, Bill and Alison?
I think Moore.
Oh, sorry, Moore.
So, yes, I think.
Okay, well, Bill, then Moore, I can. Okay, well, Bill, then Morag, then Alison.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, 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 I think we're, we're slightly at risk of having a conversation on the subject right, you know, on the, on the subject of ceremony rather than on setting up.
Setting up the group, yeah, exactly.
But I would say that, um, the experience of the huge improvements to Remembrance Day as a result of a group meeting and discussing things suggests to me that it would be an excellent idea. And it is something we ought to proceed with.
Okay, now.
So I agree with Bill. I think it's a very good idea to set up a committee to look at this.
Yeah.
Because while I haven't been on the council very long, but the amount of times the civic process has been discussed. And, and some people are very, oh, back in the day, we used to do this and that. And then some of us, maybe less time served and younger ones, may have different views. And I think there's always a compromise in there where, you know, we might want to save some things and do some other things differently.
Not about just going back to what was.
No, I, I think, I think.
The, the membership of the group is diverse.
Yes, yes, okay. There's always a danger anyway, the incoming mayors, they don't, they might want to do things differently to their predecessors. Um, but I don't know. Anyway, anyway, we, we, there's a proposal that we set up the group to consider it. And you seconding, uh, Morag?
Alison, not to.
Well, I, I, I don't need to say it, it's been said really. I agree at all points, yeah.
Okay, so we've got a proposal. Second to those in favour?
Hands up.
Okay.
Now, now needs a membership.
Well, I say that I want to, but I'm taking into account what Morag says. And I do think we need to have a diverse group. I think you're absolutely right. So.
I would, I would definitely in her absence and propose Estelle to join them. That has nothing to do with it. She has a, an insightful knowledge and. That's my, my two pence.
I'd be happy.
Well, Phil's the longest, I think, the longest serving, isn't he, probably? Is he? Is Phil the longest-serving councillor?
I imagine she is.
You know, Estelle's got a, a lot of knowledge, a lot of knowledge. She remembers things very well.
Okay.
Can I also suggest that Jackson with his brilliant.
Flag carrying.
Oh, yes, flag carrying went to a whole new level. You were excellent.
Thank you.
We haven't seen that for years, so.
Okay, so Estelle, how many people do we want on this committee? Four?
Uh, yeah, not two. I will be that we're having all fifteen, but enough to make sure that.
So, uh, you've got a bill?
I was thinking, dare I propose myself, given that, uh, clergy tend to have an awful lot to do with ceremony.
It'd be important to get a collegial.
Clerical? Clerical is what you do.
The Jacks is four people and the mayor, whoever that might be at this time.
Four people and the mayor or?
I think that, because it's recent experience, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, um, um.
Okay, so we've got Estelle, we've got Jackson, Bill and.
Estelle.
And, so, Anderson, join, yeah?
But did you want to join?
Oh, do you want to?
No particular view.
I'm, I'm happy to.
I'd like to join if possible. But doesn't matter.
Um.
Well, I was a deputy mayor, she'll have an inside.
Yeah, well, we can have, we can have, we can have five people in the mayor. So, okay, Carol, Jackson, Bill, uh, Estelle, uh.
I've got Estelle, Estelle. Estelle, Jackson, Bill, Alison, Mayor and Carol.
Okay, yeah, that's it. So I'm doing this.
Also, I'll put that in the other.
Right. Good, okay, eleven three, uh, the car parking trial. And we've got a report from the Town Park and was spread to the trial of free parking in twenty twenty six, twenty seven.
Thank you. And this hasn't come from any particular, um, you know, I'm not hearing this is a big issue, but other towns are discussing it. And I didn't want you to be left behind. Um, so in particular, other towns in Powis, Brecon, already provide this service. New Town have been discussing it recently and of course quite a few headlines. So I wanted also you to have the same opportunity to discuss it as well. Um, the council's plan identified town sustainability as a strategic priority. Um, parking charges are frequently cited by residents, businesses and visitors as a barrier to visiting Welshpool, particularly on Saturdays. And I remember a debate by, by Sally in this chamber about the increasing fees, you know, car parking issues have existed in this chamber for a long time. And you have recently just approved free parking for the twenty ninth of November, sixth, thirteenth and twentieth of December. Uh, back in twenty twenty three, Powis carried out a review into parking, um, which identified that Church Street had two hundred and thirty spaces, an average Saturday peak occupancy of twenty five percent, which is only fifty four vehicles. Uh, and that happened in April, uh, and the peak occupancy for April to March twenty two, twenty three was seventy seven percent. Um, and the car park took in seventy five thousand pounds of revenue that year. Now, unfortunately, that's the only figures that are publicly available. So things may have moved on. You know, Powis has had a parking review since then and has lowered fees for one hour parking back to, um, I mean, is it one pound fifty now? One hour? Um, I believe so. So basically, the review found that Church Street was one of the lowest occupancy quartile of all paid car parks in Powis and therefore with substantial unused capacity. I think, and I can totally, if you look at Church Street, you can see that it's massive and only one bit really is occupied a bit by the T I C. As I said, other councils have been exploring this issue. In New Town in particular, they've been discussing parking for a pound. Um, however, I'm not really sure how they're going to get around that one. Um, looking at that, the, looking at the paper for the meeting they have on Monday. Um, it seems that they'd be asking powers to change the software, the machines, at a cost. Um, so that the way that we've come up with could be a, a better alternative. Uh, the benefits relate to the fact that the removal of the cost prohibitor on the highest trading day of the week, expected increase in the car park, higher footfall supporting retail hospitality markets and events. While we're unable to levy a fee, the cost, the cost can be offset by introducing voluntary donations. The reputation of benefits to the town can also quantify the better public relations and project, projected increased economic demand. Uh, so the proposal would be that new trial, something for twenty six weeks, uh, during the busiest season of the year, which is April to September, which is the tourism season. It would begin on the fourth of April and end on the twenty sixth of September, if my dates are correct. Uh, the cost of the town council would be, um, just under six thousand pounds, that's ex VAT. Um, and Powers, while they do not allow us to place signage on the machines themselves, all the pay boards um, have allowed us to put signage next to them. So for example, on Saturday, we will be putting out signage next to the machines, telling people the car park is free and funded by Welshpool Town Council and for the next, um, four Saturdays after that. Uh, the scheme can be offset by voluntary donations, which is explained below. I've tried to forecast what we think, um, donations would be. Um, I have a several conversations with people about this, you know, if it's free, people are more inclined then to pay what they think they would like to pay. For example, in Ossow Street, they have lower car parking fees, their car park's quite busy. If you came to a car park and it was free and you thought, I'd like to contribute two pounds instead of the, the five pound charge and it would be all day. And of course, we're still taking in some income that could offset that, that proposal cost to the town council. Uh, the scheme is, is deliverable within legal and operational framework set by Powers, which requires us to hire it completely. We can't just hire, certain parts have to hire all for that fee. Um, um, throughout the twenty six, twenty six weeks. Um, and we'd have to, have to back this up with a strong marketing campaign to drive usage and donations and, and definitely a robust monitoring and evaluation period needs to be conducted. Um, especially with, um, with local businesses, you need to evaluate if their economic picture went up or down. Not necessarily just footfall, but their, their impact on their, their takings is quite important. Uh, this is linked to the plan in two places. Legally, it can be supported. Um, the, the cost of the council, the maximum cost, of course, will be five thousand nine hundred and ninety nine pounds and eight pence. Of course, that will be offset though by donations and that actually translates to a additional band de-charge. You, if you would add this into the budget without removing something else, of about two pounds thirteen a year. So as you, if you spread the cost over, over the entire tax base, it is relatively small cost per year, which, uh, works out at eight p per week. Um, that it will be in operation for twenty six weeks. And, and that is the report. And I just wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to also discuss it in Welshpool.
Hmm, thank you, Richard. Um, I think Richard was first, then Morag, and then, uh.
I, I'd like to speak against this idea. Um, what it's essentially asking, uh, Welshpool taxpayers to do is to pay for other people, many of whom don't live in Welshpool, to park in our town. And I think we need to bear in mind that probably one third of households, in fact, I know one third of households in Welshpool don't own a car at all. Uh, and they will pay for this on their council tax. Many more do own a car that live within close proximity to the town centre and therefore walk into town or get the bus into town. Um, and therefore what we're looking about is people, looking at is people who live outside Welshpool, either elsewhere in Powis or in the visitors, to have free parking paid for by the residents of Welshpool. And I just can't accept that that's right. Um, and I don't think it's the right way to, to, to go about things. I think if you, it would be very difficult to identify people who have come into Welshpool, especially because there is free parking. Um, because many of them will come in who would have come in anyway and will find themselves getting, uh, free space. Um, and, uh, I think that for those reasons, I don't think that, that, that the public purse should be subsidizing parking in our car parks. If you were to propose, for instance, that we were to offer a free bus service on Saturdays, which would help many people who are on low incomes, who live within the town, then I might be in favour of that and perhaps that's an alternative idea to, to consider. Uh, but parking, no, so I shall vote against it.
Okay, thank you, Richard, Morag.
Okay, um, thank you, Chairman. I actually like the report, but, um, similarly to Richard, I don't know. Because I hear many, many, many complaints about the cost of parking in Welshpool. And I think Powers Council, County Council is at fault for the high charges that people are being forced to pay. Um, but we have a small opportunity at the moment. Because I know you said we will do it for six months and then see what, what happens. But we haven't yet had the, um, the, the, the one we are paying for in December to see whether that works. And if we, what I'm saying is, I would rather say, well, let's hold off at the moment. Let's evaluate the free parking on Saturdays during the Christmas period. And did that, were, you know, were people from Welshpool happy with that? Did it bring other people in town? Because I think it is important that we do encourage people to come into town um, from outside the villages. I know it's, it's just a pay that only the people that live in Welshpool get to, to pay for it. Um, but it brings business into the town and that's where their jobs and income comes from. So it, it's, you know, sits and runs half, it doesn't have to gather. But we've got the opportunity to actually do some consultation on people in Welshpool to say, well, if we, this is what happened in December. If we do this again over the summer months, what do you think? You know, to get a straw poll from people of Welshpool with some evidence to show that, A, it's benefit to you if you, you know, like me, have to drive down in the car every day. Um, not every day, but, um, I can't walk, I could get the bus, but it's not really convenient, you know. Um, but it would give us that space within, from a budgetary point of view of doing it, we have the special project budget already. And, and I think if, if the people of Welshpool then came back and said, well, yes, actually, we agree. Look, you know, we think it's a good idea. We could then use the special project budget without actually adding anything to the council tax precept as we are now. Um, and go ahead on that basis. Of course, that would reduce the amount of money we then have for special. Hey, to me, this is a special project.
Hmm, okay. Um, yeah, I mean, our parking is, and, and its expense is the bane of every small market town, isn't it? And I always feel that there should be cooperation between us, the council, traders in, in the form of, um, a Chamber of Commerce, if there was one, and, and Powers County Council. Um, because it, 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 if it, if it's going to boost trade and generally add to the prosperity of the town, then, I don't know, we, we shouldn't be held to ransom all the time because it's a big revenue raiser for the county council. Um, the money doesn't directly benefit us, go somewhere else. And, uh, and I've never thought that was entirely fair. Bill?
Yeah, um, I, 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 uh, think that, um, whilst I, I think this is an idea worth pursuing. Um, I, I agree with Morag, but I would like to see it brought back to the first full council meeting in the new year so that we can include in our deliberations the results of what's happened in, uh, in, in December. Um, I, I, I think that, that the cost is, is, is not huge. It's worth looking at. Um, the, um, I mean, I would rather see, uh, car park charges throughout the year at half the rate or less than they are now. But that's not something that's within our, our reach. So we have to do, I, I think we do have to do something. Um, one suggestion I would make is it might be worth inquiring of the councils immediately around whether they might make a contribution towards the cost of this. Um, because it will benefit their people potentially, as Richard has said, more than people here. I would also suggest that were we to go ahead, uh, on the dates that you say, we actually move them slightly and start on the last Saturday in March, which is therefore the Saturday of the weekend before, uh, the, before Easter, rather than the weekend of Easter.
Alison.
Uh, yeah, I, um, again, I, I think there's some mileage in this. Excuse the pun, saying we're talking about car parking, but no, I, um, I think, uh, some years ago, um, in Carmarthen, um, this is quite a while ago, their, um, parking meters all broke one day. The whole electronic system went down and word got out. And that week, their takings in the shops rocketed. I'm trying to remember whether it, they went up a third or whether it was more than that. It was certainly a third, but that's a lot. Um, it could have been more. Now, I think that there are several things that will help us. One is the SmartTowns, um, software. Because as Richard said, we're not interested in footfall as much as the increase in, uh, the profitability of our businesses. So we need to know that people are going into the businesses. So, yes, we need to know whether people are coming into town. But are they actually spending money when they're here? Because if they are, then that is beneficial to our businesses and therefore to our residents. Um, the other thing that I was thinking, I think the idea of donations is a good idea. Um, part of that again could come from the, um, the SmartTowns thing so that it comes up on, as you come into town, on your, uh, mobile phone, you get a Ben, Richard, what's the word? You get the thing come up that tells you about SmartTown, a.
Notification.
Yes, you get notification and some kind of a strapline thing come on your phone. You can have then details about the town and the businesses in the town. That will come up automatically. And it can also encourage you to make that payment electronically at the time. Um, the other thing is, is that if we decided this was something on to do with, to do, then it would be worth approaching the businesses to see whether they would have a collection box in their businesses. Because I was thinking that if we did this and we said, this is what it's costing us, and anything we make over this amount, we will give to charity and the charity will be chosen by the people of Welshpool. Now, I think then we are, we are demonstrating our commitment to Welshpool. We are offering a service to people, whether they live in Welshpool or not. And they are also seeing that we are not able to control it in other ways, but we can we can tweak things and make them work better for people. So I think there are things we can do. I'd like us to think about it in, in light of the results of what goes on in December. But I think there's definitely mileage in it in that case.
Thank you, Alison. So are we going to wait and see what happens? Oh, sorry, Ben.
It's okay, just a quick one from me. Just looking briefly at the SmartTowns data, we, we could really see where the big drop offs are. And traditionally, it's not so much in the summer months. It might also be worth considering, and it's a good report, I'm really interested in this. It might also be worth considering what that would look like, and especially talking to businesses about when their weakest times of the year are. So we're kind of reinvesting in our community and the businesses by making those months the free Saturday or pay what you can Saturday months.
I've got a long one, I'm afraid to say, but I'm really interested in everyone's ideas. So first of all, you mentioned about giving money. How was the method going to be to give money?
So as a public authority, we are incredibly privileged to be able to use a tool called gov.uk pay, which is a platform developed by the UK government for local authorities, NHS, all those type of things, to be able to pay electronically. So the, the, the system was going to be, look, we're also, when the car park is, we've got our building next to it, the TIC. So the proposed idea was that we would have a QR code or some sort of mechanism people to donate electronically using their mobile devices. And I believe if you actually use the pay thing on your phone, it's compatible with Apple Pay and Google Pay, so that breaks down the barrier. And then if you wanted to pay cash, you could just pop into the TIC and pop it into a box. We weren't comfortable with leaving boxes outside. That has a crime risk to it. And also, you know, card readers and things outside. So that was that separate approach, which of course then would work if we looked at, you know, beacons or notifications, you know, pushing them with the link.
So would it be like a QR code on the sign that says this parking is free this Saturday? We'd have that. Is that something we could also do on the Christmas ones? Oh, we're going to, so we will see how effective that is.
So that's definitely implemented for the Christmas ones. Again, your process paper is too premature, too, too quick and before evaluating. So happy to go away and properly evaluate the Christmas one.
Because as you were saying, yes, we all know from the Christmas one evaluation. And also, I absolutely adored your idea of the bus thing. So I was wondering, as a out there proposal, if instead of doing six months of free car parking, we do alternating three months of free car parking and three months of free bus service for locals around. So we can see and evaluate this month it's car parking, this month it's bus. And we can find out. So if you'd be able to find out from the people who run the local bus, what the cost would be in comparison to say, make Saturday all locals travel for free. Because that could be really interesting to see if that has a much better or worse effect than free car parking.
So the, the thing with buses is you're, you're not, you're not limited to the free factor. So the council could decide just to subsidise buses and people pay a pound, for example, and travel on, on the, is it eighty eight? I want to make a pound for the town services. And that would need some extra work, though. We need to find out exactly what we're dealing with. I believe actually Ossos Street do, do a free bus, as in they subsidise the town buses, costing about ten thousand pounds per annum. So it's not a small sum. Because of course, the more people use it, you're essentially paying the fare on their behalf because powers ultimately collect the fares. So you'd still be required to pay that fare on their behalf. So the more the demand goes up, the more the council would pay. Whereas with the car parks, we are capped at a certain amount. So with, with capital that amount, it can't go above that. But an open ended scheme like the buses, you'd have to allocate a sum and work out, it would require some more thought. But it's a fantastic idea. And again, you have the legal powers to do it. Other places do it and it gets another economic driver that you have got in your toolbox.
Just one final thing, if you don't mind. I was going to say, there's a lot of talk about contacting local businesses. Yep, I've been thinking it would be a very good idea if we set up a meeting where representative local businesses get to talk to us and say, we've tried it.
We've troubled it.
Yeah, we should still try it.
We can try it again.
Well, we, we, we already are trying it. In the events and planning committee this month, they approved a paper on tourism branding. As part of that proposal, it was a re-establishment of a tourism forum and a business forum operating six monthly or quarterly. So we will be trying to attack that again. I know that it's been proposed in the past and has fallen down, but hopefully we can try again and
I know some interest from a lot of local businesses. I think I could pull some of them in, so hopefully.
Well, if you can get to, yeah, get, get around the table, Jackson.
Yeah, indeed, having one of the ones on the project side.
So just to point out that the, the OTA bus service is free if you're over sixty already. And let's just say, most of the people who are on that bus are over sixty.
Yeah, I was going to make exactly the same point.
Can I just say, one, one of the suggestions that was given to me, because there's this issue about a small group of people who live within certain postcode in Welshpool paying for everybody else to benefit. And that suggests, why don't you do a, a Welshpool residence permit that gives them free parking on a Saturday every day, you know?
The only, the balance of that is that powers won't let us. It's either free for everyone or free for nobody. But since the permit thing, it can be very easily established. We've got the schemes in place to do it. But I, I, I hundred percent understand the point that Richard's making is a very valid one. And that's the point why it says in the report about double taxation. But also, all your other services are exactly the same mechanism. You have public toilets and you pay, you're paying twenty nine ninety a year for the toilets. Not necessarily just for people of Welshpool, it does also for the outside of Welshpool. So you do it for every service.
Okay. So we're going to see how it goes in December. I mean, to assess it, obviously, that needs to be done with, with some nicety. We need to know quite what the impact has been. Bearing in mind that there's going to be increased traffic into the town around that time anyway. So it's quite difficult to measure how, how much extra cars that the scheme brings in, but I'm sure
we'll try.
We'll try, we'll try.
Taking your, we'll take your comments, you will, I mean, they're all fantastic comments. We'll, we'll try and come up with a scheme where we speak to businesses, try and measure their, their output. And also how we can measure and, and maybe collect the information about the people who are actually using the car park on those days. Again, the beauty of having a building next to the car park is that there is some staff resource next to the car park that can go and check the count, how many cars are on the car park and have a scan around and see how busy it is without having to rely on formal footfall, you know, divided and things like that.
Just as a side note, while I was assessing the interest in local businesses of having a interaction with the council, some local businesses have business books which they've been keeping for multiple years, which have information on where everyone's come from, which would be very useful. And also can be used to assess how football has been this year compared to, say, the last two years. Because obviously, Covid years aren't very useful information, but twenty twenty four and twenty twenty three might well be a good idea being to say, were they stable? And we have a lot more in twenty twenty five. So we might be able to ask local businesses for that level of information. So that could really help.
Could you just vote to defer it?
Could I just make the point? I did mention it. But I think that SmartTowns technology is going to be essential in this to getting this, to getting the data that we need to make an informed decision.
Right, so we need a proposal.
Happy to propose, well, no, Morag proposes in our second.
If you devote against it, of course, you would bring it back for six months and the six months also, if you just voted to defer it.
Okay, so there's in favour.
Hands up.
Okay, yes, that's carried. Thank you all very much. Right, we got the One Voice Wales AGM, twenty first of January. We need to elect some representatives from the council to attend, I guess, Alison, you.
One representative.
Yeah, but if you read the paper, Chair, it's, you only have one person.
Okay.
No, I propose, Alison.
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay, thanks, Alison.
Alison will also need a bit of a steer. As you can see, you've got a list of motions that are being debated by the committee. Alison will need some sort of steer on how she votes on your behalf. And you will also note that you have seconded the second motion. So implicitly, you vote in favour.
Yeah, we did, we did second, second that one, although I think Newtown's experience I think that they were the ones that proposed it. It, it perhaps are slightly different from ours. I, I really experienced that much of a problem. But if what they say is right, and I assume it is, then I think we should definitely support that. And indeed, we have, we've seconded.
But if you, if, over to Alison, if you know.
Well, it was really the number three from Gethluygh Community Council that I felt could be contentious and I wanted your steer on, which is this AGM calls upon One Voice Wales to formally encourage local councils to advocate for the Welsh Government to seek full devolvement of the Crown Estate to Wales.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I would propose that we advise Alison to vote in favour of that motion. It's actually a policy that's already adopted by Paris County Council to devolve the Crown Estate to Wales, which means that it could be managed to, to the benefit of Wales as opposed to the benefit of the whole of the UK. It, it is mainly, but not exclusively, offshore rights in Cardigan Bay in particular. So it has an impact in terms of income from, for example, offshore wind farms. But it does actually involve some small areas of land onshore, including some in Paris. So I might, I will support that motion.
Okay, what sort of, what sort of income is generated by the Crown Estates in Wales? I have no idea. I know it's a lot, but
sorry, Gwynedd Council paid a lot, didn't it?
To the Crown Estate, they do, yeah. Because some of their lands, the Gwynedd gives access to.
And what opposition is there from elsewhere in the country against evolving it?
It hasn't been, I mean, it's been advocated within Wales, I think by, I think all the primary local authorities in Wales now. The Welsh Government support doing it, the UK Government do not.
Okay.
Sorry, Ben. Thanks, Jack. Yeah, I'll back second Richard's point. Essentially, I was just going to say that every single county council in Wales has voted to devolve the Crown Estate. Every single one. There isn't a council in Wales that is against it. So I would encourage us to support the rest of Wales and all councils and the Welsh Government to, yeah, to have everybody, as in every organisation and every third party or third sector body support the devolution of the Crown Estate.
Okay. We need a formal vote on that. Or can Alison just take note of views?
I think Alison can take note and then you want to have a formal vote to put it on the record.
Is there anything else there that anybody feels they would like to discuss?
You vote against the increasing fees.
Chair, I think, I think the suggestion of setting up an assets transfer officer is a very interesting one. Because I know, you know, community asset transfers are often complex issues under which, with maybe the advice of an officer appointed by One Voice Wales, could be extremely useful. I've no idea how much it would cost or how it would affect One Voice Wales's budget, but the principle of the idea seems like a good one to me.
It does, it is a good idea. Asset transfers always seemed like a good idea at the time. It invariably store up trouble for the future. And I think getting good, sound advice at the outset from a body that's explicitly set up for that purpose would, would be no bad thing. Yeah.
I, I think the, the first item about statutory consultation of you know, I, I think, you know, we, we, we are the people on the ground and we should be, are, and we are able to, to, to make useful contributions, I think.
And as, if you don't know, as you know, transport, in particular, the bus is going to go through a transformation in Wales because it went past some quite beefy legislation about well, in set nationalising it back to local councils, which was prohibited earlier today to set the transport out. So there's going to be big changes to bus transport, connecting up, integrated network, so it could be one for the future.
Are you happy with all this?
Yeah, thank you.
Fine, thanks. Okay, the next meeting, oh no, outside bodies. Has anybody got a report from any outside body that they've attended?
Have you had your Sustainable Powers conference?
Sustainable Powers?
I, I couldn't remember what it was.
Okay.
Can I just say? I hope to attend the first meeting of the English School in Wales, Tooty and Wales School, I think it's next week, so.
As governor?
As governor.
This, the one that's sadly vacated, yeah, yeah.
Yes, I have been to my first meeting at Southend, right, but I really get involved until next term, I guess. But we, we did attend the meeting here, of course, for the meeting, which was a useful meeting and just worth noting as such.
Perhaps it would be appropriate to say that it seems that Paris are again trawling for views on closing the sixth forms in the schools. They were putting it off, but it's actually being advertised that they would like people's views on that.
Really?
Yes.
Yes, this is the consultation with parents and pupils, which is the, which is the second phase that should have been us having a view in second phase, but we're now in the third. It's still going on, I believe, online and things like that.
You seem strangely reluctant to engage with us and we've keep being kicked down the road, don't we, really, on this?
It, it, it will, they've got an external consultant doing the work. We will get our chance to speak in, in the phase three. It's just that it got moved forward.
I think to be fair, it's just that they, they realised they needed to do this basic consultation before they
chose an option one.
In relation to other outside bodies, this isn't really an outside body because you are it, but we will have to have a meeting of the IU Safe Trust at some point in the new year to sign off accounts and agree a way forward. You're all corporate trustees identific by office, so we will have to
What's the, what are the assets?
I don't know if I want to say in public session, but there's nobody else, there's nobody else here, so it's fine. And there's one property.
It is just the one property.
The one property.
But probably the business of the meeting should be to decide whether the trust should be wound up.
I don't know if the deed allows you to, is the difficulty. The copy I've got is very grainy, because it was established a very long time ago. And the two beneficiaries were both in the Patan Museum and Patan Club. So we also need to get their input as well, I think.
The trust wants the results, the beneficiaries are all, all in agreement. There's, there's no reason why we shouldn't.
There's a counter place to have.
Can I propose that that meeting is held on the same night as our full council meeting?
Yes.
And if it's held before the full council meeting, then the trustees from the Patan Club, Patan Museum can be invited. And they can, we can have that as the first part of the meeting. We know everybody will be here. And we get it done, but it is important that they're invited as well.
Yeah, the difficult aspect is I'm not, I'm not formally the clerk to the IU Safe Trust, so I'm, I'm limited in my involvement, but on your behalf as the corporate trustees, I will arrange for the meeting and that's.
Who is?
I don't know, I don't know. I think it's always just I think it's always just been the town clerk. It's not, it's my job now to be, to be the clerk.
The, it was put to the Paris Land Club and the Paris Land Museum that it was, um, the money was divided and it went to those bodies.
Yeah, they're, they're the two beneficiaries.
It also could be possible that they didn't divide it, they kept it together and they managed it as the two beneficiaries.
I suppose, yeah.
Uh, it's, there's two options there. It rather got lost, uh, the chairman died to me, Richard, David.
The Paris Land.
Yes. And um, and it's been difficult to get a definite decision made on it. But it did go so far down the line when I was mayor, which is some years ago now.
It's just, I, I've, you know, I've got bills for Paris or a lot of empty preening on the property. We only lent these, wrapping up some supernatural expenditure. Um, or something needs to happen.
It's empty.
Makes sense, empty it matters. Makes no sense, no sense at all, uh, at least six months.
So there's no income coming, why has it not been relent?
Um, we're, we've been advised by our, um, we've been advised by Harry Ray that it can't be because of the standards of the property.
It's, it's in a very poor state of repair and we would have, I mean, the, the, somebody would have to expend quite a bit of money on it to bring it up to.
Right.
Happy state, so it's been, it's stood empty now for quite a while. Um, it makes no sense to keep this running.
Um, as there is nobody here who isn't on a council. Um, the, uh, the background to this, can I? No?
It is live streaming.
Right, okay.
I don't think I say anything that's confidential, but.
No, all right, I won't say anything then.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, that, that, that potentially then quite, quite an important meeting which trustees should all attend for the purpose of a store. Um, okay, the next meeting of full council will be on the tenth of December at six thirty. Uh, I now need a proposal from somebody to move into private session. Thank you, Bill, seconded by Alison.
Doesn't say chair, it would be the last bit, my festive refreshments, the last meeting.
Oh, yes, yes, so the last, the last full council meeting will be followed by, um, yeah, festive refreshments.
Those are still there.
Yeah, and I think that's to start as well.
Yeah.
Councillors and stuff.
And, and I think you agreed to invite spouses as well.
And spouses, everybody.
And spouses.
Yes, yes.
Well, Jackson, Ben, have you got time to find, find yourselves one?
Do you want to get married?
Yeah, it's, I mean, we're in official place, aren't we? I'm sure a man initiated it, not, we've got to return reverence.
Vote, vote, you'll be proud of it.
Thank you. Right, that's it now, we're now.